Call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our July 13th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is brought to you by Shrewsbury Media Connection, Mark Sarah of the SMC. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30, 330, and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Channels 30, 330, from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on July 27th, 2021. Tonight's meeting will also be available on YouTube for your viewing pleasure. So let's go to the preliminary items on the agenda. First item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, any discussion, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve minutes of the June 22nd, 2021, and June 29th, 2021 meetings. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements, reports, colleagues, any announcements at all? I just have two, they relate to vacancies. We have a vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board of Selectmen is seeking one qualified individual interested in serving on the ZBA to fill a vacant term set to expire on March 31st, 2022. The zoning board of appeals usually meets on the last Monday of the month and is, and on an as-needed basis depending on the caseload. Interested persons must be registered voters of the town and are asked to submit a letter of interest and resume via email or mail to John Samia, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., or to Justin Dobson, Jdobson@shrewsburymass.gov by 4:30 PM on Monday, July 19th, 2021. And then there's a second vacancy as well, was posted on July 6th. It says the Town Manager is seeking interest for Affordable Housing Board of Trustees. Town Manager is seeking three qualified individuals interested in serving on the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees. The Affordable Housing Board of Trustees, established under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 55(c), consists of five members. One member shall be a designee from the Board, one member shall be the Town Manager or Assistant Town Manager, and three members shall be residents of the Town of Shrewsbury. So if you're a resident of Town of Shrewsbury and are interested, you're asked to submit a letter of interest and resume by mail to Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., 01545, or by email to JDobson@shrewsburymass.gov by no later than 4:30 PM on July 20, 21. So you do not need to be a registered voter on this, you just need to be a resident. So hopefully we'll get some interest in those positions. This, the Affordable Housing Trust was approved at the May 22nd Town Meeting. That's what I have for announcements. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the Town Manager's report. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. A few items to update you on, first and foremost this evening, I'll start with the COVID-19 report from your last meeting. The town remains designated as a gray community, which is the lowest category. I know the state has walked away from their color-coded system, but that was the last report. There's been seven additional positive cases in the community since your last meeting on June 22nd, bringing the total to 2,976 since the beginning of the pandemic in March of 2020. With regards to vaccinations, through July 9th, 65% of the total Shrewsbury residents are fully vaccinated and 71% are at least partially vaccinated. So good news on the vaccinations and our daily case counts remain still very low in comparison to the peaks that we saw this winter. A couple additional updates for the Board outside of COVID-19. Based upon the 2020 census data, the town will be adding an additional voter precinct. We'll be moving from 10 precincts to 11 precincts. Town staff is working with the Secretary of State's office, with our GIS team and planning team to develop those equal census tracts, equal number of voters, and will be bringing a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen in October for your consideration, which will take your signature to send it up to the state. Additionally, I wanted to update the Board that since our application in the middle of June, we've received $2,016,000 from the state from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Board members will recall, we're anticipating receiving a total of $11.5 million, and originally anticipated that our first allotment of funding would be $5.75 million. However, we've only received a portion of those funds. The funds are broken up into the direct funding from the federal government to the town, and then the portion that we anticipated receiving, since Worcester County is not a functioning government entity, we have not received any of the latter funds. Requested assistance from Representative Kane to try to determine when those additional funds were going to be released. It's a challenge to bring prioritization and plan requests to the Board whenever we don't have certainty over the total amount of funding we're going to receive. This is kind of the conversation that we're having throughout the spring months is, yes, you know, we have on good terms how much money we're going to get, but now we sit here on July 13th, still with only $2 million, and struggling to be able to put a plan in place not having what we originally anticipated. So I will keep you posted on when we may receive those additional funds, and then continue forward with our plan to have the Board of Selectmen prioritize various buckets and approaches for the use of those funds in accordance with the federal regulations. And then finally, I'm just happy to report that we received a grant through the State's Shared Streets Program. Application went in through the Planning and Economic Development Department. The total funding is $48,926.90, which will be applied towards the town's wayfinding project for the town center, and will be bringing locations and additional documents to the Board prior to implementing those plans. So that's the end of my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments for the Town Manager? No? Okay. We'll go under, next item on the agenda, under New Business, it's item agenda number five, Review an Act on Order of Takings for Route 20 Land Takings. Board members, as you remember, at our town meeting, a town meeting on May 22nd, 2021, a town meeting approved Article 39 where the Board of Selectmen were authorized to acquire by gift. Purchaser taking by eminent domain, the fee interest, permanent easements, temporary easements, or any other interests in land, as may be deemed necessary to complete the improvements to Hartford Turnpike Route 20, as shown in a plan entitled Hartford Turnpike Route 20 in the Town of Shrewsbury, P.S.E. and P.S.E. Design Plans, Sheets 1 through 60 dated March 3rd, 2021. This order of takings is in furtherance of that, authority conferred by town meeting onto the Board. The only ques, so, in our drive, there's also been, there was initial draft order of taking, and since then it's been further revised to provide additional book, or additional information of the various takings, or temporary, I guess, taking versus easements and the like that are throughout this order of takings. One question I have for you, Mr. Mizikar, that in addition to the order of takings, is there any action required with any payments? Or is it just approval of the order of taking? Because I, so that's just one question before we take it to any questions.
So along with the filing of the order of takings, the town will mail the appropriate appraised value, or checks equivalent to the appraised value of the properties that we're taking that were not received through gift. That in total is a little over 30,000. It's detailed within your documents, but no other specific action related to that is required. We will handle that with the filing.
So by approving the order of takings under Section 6, that as the award of damages, then everything's covered? Okay. Any questions or comments? Not all entertain a motion regarding the order of takings?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board approve and sign the necessary documents for the orders, order of takings for Route 20 land takings.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There being none, having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda relates to review an act on Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Public Health Excellence Grant Program for Shared Services Letter of Commitment. The City of Worcester was awarded funding through the Mass. Department of Public Health Excellence Grant in the amount of $245,160 per year for three years for a public health district cost analysis business model for CMR, PHA. It's been over 11 years now that Worcester has provided public health services to the surrounding areas through intermunicipal agreements like in Shrewsbury. As, through an email that we saw with this, and then I'll get to why we have this in front of us, it says that "We welcome this opportunity to hire a consultant to work with the Alliance. Expected outcomes include a cost analysis and long-term business model to support sustainability and capacity to maintain and expand public health services, programs, initiatives, and policies." And then in turn, as part of this, the Mass. Department of Public Health is requiring each community to provide a letter of commitment by July 31st, and that is what is in front of us for approval. Any questions? Not all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board approve and sign necessary documents relative to the Public Health Excellence Grant Program for Shared Services.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on Edgemere Crossing Community Support Document. I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Mizikar, if you could give a brief explanation.
Absolutely. So in accordance with the town's zoning bylaws requiring affordable homes to be constructed in multifamily developments, this puts into place the town's community support document signed by the Board of Selectmen, which is a requirement of the DHCD process, supporting the developer's initiative to declare 25 units within the 250-unit development to be affordable, and they'll receive technical assistance in, throughout the process, and have those 25 called local action units designated as affordable for low and moderate income individuals.
Any questions or comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board approve the Edgemere Crossing Regulatory Agreement. Is that correct?
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, under Item 8, Review an Act on Extension of Outdoor Dining Licenses. Just to provide a little background, we've received a board brief, it informs the Board and also the community. Section 2475, Chapter 70, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency relative to provisions to extend temporary outdoor dining licenses of restaurant establishments until April 1st, 2022. On September 10th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an order making certain Phase 3 adjustments, which extended the period for outdoor table service by licensees, license for on-premises consumption up to and until 60 days after the date of the end of the state of emergency. The expiration date under this order is August 15th, 2021. On June 16th, 2021, Governor Baker signed an extension of the COVID-19 measures, Section 2475, extending certain measures adopted during the state of emergency. One of these relates to, under Chapter 20, Section B, the local licensing authority may approve a request for expansion of outdoor table service or an extension of an earlier granted approval under COVID-19, Order Number 50 from the effective date of the Act until April 1st, 2022. So what we're being, doing here, although we don't have for these individual licenses we're given to them before, to have outdoor alcohol consumption, that we're taking the approach of unilaterally extending, correct? So that's what we're doing here?
All table service.
All table service? Okay. Yes. The only one question I have, and then I'll open up to any other questions, is that the original, say, COVID safety plans required six feet between all the tables, will that change at all as part of this, or is that just fluid as part of this process?
Yes, this just continues the ability for them to conduct outdoor dining, so other limitations have been lifted.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or comment?
Just one.
Yeah, Mrs. Gasipoff.
What is the path forward if any of these restaurants decides they'd like to try to make outdoor dining permanent rather than just a temporary?
It would be through the local zoning process, so we'd have to consider those changes to our zoning bylaw to allow this. So this, that's really my belief and the intention of the Governor and the legislature is to give communities that opportunity to continue the dining now throughout the warm weather months and have time to make those decisions for next spring if we so choose.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for this.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board extend outdoor dining licenses pursuant to, pursuant to Mass. General Law for Hooters, 378 Maple Ave., Lakeside Bar and Grill, 97 Boston Turnpike, Jimmy's Tavern, 50 Boston Turnpike, Burton's Grill, 193 Boston Turnpike, Bollywood Grill, 97 Boston Turnpike, and Amici's slash Willie's at 582 Main Street.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those that approve the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act and renewal of the intermunicipal agreement of the Animal Control Animal Inspector Services. So we have an agreement between Westboro, Grafton, and Shrewsbury that has historically been for a year term. Last year on July 14th, we extended the term of the agreement from July 1st, 2020 to June 3rd, 2021. This relates to really overflow services for Shrewsbury to the other communities, whereas Westboro provides a significant amount of support to Grafton, if I recall correctly. What we're being asked today is to approve an amendment for a six-month extension of term, and all other terms remain the same. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
To the manager, six months? I find that curious.
Yeah, we, the main concern, well, there's some concerns between Westboro and Grafton because they're the two most integral, as far as exchange of funds and level services provided between those two communities, and they want to continue the agreement. Grafton just has a new town administrator, and they, but they want to revise it, so they're not looking at to enter into the full year. As Mr. Samia had mentioned, Shrewsbury just provides backup services through this intermunicipal agreement, so we're not really in those negotiations, so it's no harm for us for the six months, but we will be back before January 1st with a longer-term agreement.
Terrific.
Thank you. Three communities.
Any other questions? Not all entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board approve the renewal of the intermunicipal agreement of Animal Control Animal Inspector Services.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, under New Business, number 10, Review an Act to enter into Second Amendment Agreement with Mass. Development for the Beale Site Redevelopment. So in essence, but Mr. Mizikar, I'll ask you to add additional color to the extent I miss anything, is that this is additional support for up to $5,000 from Landwise LLC through Mass. Development, and in essence, what we're allowing or seeking approval for is the payment of $5,000 to Mass. Development to in turn pay for the professional services to Landwise LLC, and the services are outlined in the scope of work from the June 8th, say, proposal letter from Landwise to Mass. Development. So that's what we've been asked to approve, but we're actually being asked to approve through the Second Amendment and memorandum of agreement with Mass. Development. Any questions? Not all entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board enter into the Second Amendment Agreement with Mass. Development for Beale Site Redevelopment.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act and the appointment of one member to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2024. This resulted from one vacancy where one existing member of the Historic District Commission elected not to proceed, and we have two candidates. Whitney, I don't want to, Godecki Andrews, 11 Cranbrook Road, and Jim Smith, 4 Merriam Avenue. Any comments or questions? We have received materials, just so folks watching from home, we have received letters of interest, their credentials, their professional experience, were all presented to us. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Well, I mean, I, once again, two excellent candidates have submitted letters of interest, which makes our decision both, both difficult and easy, I mean, actually. You know, honestly, my, my thinking when we're trying to appoint people to a multi-body board with which we have appointment authority over, you think about the individuals, but you think about the Board. I mean, you think about, or at least I do, and I'm sure others do as well, you think about the totality of how the Board is going to interact, particularly with the public, but also amongst itself. Again, two excellent candidates have to favor one tonight, each one of us has to. You know, considering that concept of the totality of the Board, I am in favor of appointing Whitney Godecki, if I pronounced that right, Andrews of 11 Cranbrook Road. I don't know if you'd like a motion at this time, or you might want further discussion.
Yeah, well, we open up for further discussion and can figure out which way. Any further comments or questions or thoughts?
Sure.
Mrs. Gasipoff.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what my colleague Selectman LeBeau said. I also think about the full Board when I'm looking to appoint someone. I also take into consideration the letters that people send, their background, and in this case, both of the applicants are extremely well-qualified for the role. I try to look for diversity where I can, not just in gender and race, but also diversity of thought, and, and again, looking at people who might be new to stepping into a role in municipal government by being part of a Board or a committee. And I have seen Whitney Godecki Andrews has definitely shown an interest in many other positions that have been posted over probably the past six months. They were not, she wasn't selected for any of those positions, but I do see this as being a good fit for her background and for, just reading through her letter, not only her professional experience where she's a real estate agent in the community, but also just something that she enjoys doing on a personal level, which is collecting antiques, and she was in the business of resale for antiques, and just wanting to preserve, and having that preservation background, I think, is important for this role. So while it was a very difficult decision, I am also going to select Whitney Godecki Andrews for this, this role.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Flynn?
So I agree with my colleagues that I think both candidates are, you know, we can't go wrong with either choice. My personal vote is for Jim Smith, given his deep history, knowledge of, of Shrewsbury history, and his contributions towards specific initiatives in the historical district.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I echo everything that's been said so far. Did have an opportunity to speak with both candidates, enjoyable conversations, talked through different items with both about historic preservation, talked about the Beale property, talked about revitalization of the town center. They both have a lot of experience with history, whether it's history or antiques, but both have an appreciation for that. I think that both of their backgrounds work well, with Mr. Smith living in this house for 50 years, Mrs. Andrews being in town for a long period of time as well. Both have had active involvement in many areas of the community, and so as Mr. LeBeau said, we can't go wrong with either. I'm leaning a little towards, and I am leaning towards, but it's hard, towards Mrs. Andrews, and the small edge that I give her relates right now to the commercial experience that I see that she brings to the table right now, given the revitalization. Both have a great view on history and preservation. The real estate component, I think, will be helpful as we look at the town and integrating the flavor of the, say, historic village in the community, but also balancing it against moving the community forward, but it was a very hard decision. So, you know, I appreciate the time that both of them took to speak with all of us or, or present to all of us, and, but I also will go with Ms. Andrews for this position. So I, at this point, I think we have consensus, so to your original point, I think we could have a motion, given what we have, and entertain one if you could.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board appoint to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2024, Whitney Godecki Andrews of 11 Cranbrook Road.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I can still vote.
You can say no.
Aye.
You can say no.
I can say no.
Yes.
I made a recommendation, but I'm not opposed to the motion.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So for the record, and do you want to, I'm fine either way. Do you need an answer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, either way's fine. But it's good. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for taking the time to go through it. I, you know, I hope that with the Affordable Housing Trust and Zoning Board of Appeals that we get the same, there's so many great people in our community, and hope we get the same interest, because we will take the time to look through and, and talk to you and, and go through your credentials and look beyond the four quarters of the documents. So please, if you're interested, please give it a shot. We'd love to hear from you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the reappointment of Robert Pine, 20 Montgomery Avenue, Worcester, Mass., 01604, to the Insurance Advisory Committee for a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2022. Any questions or comments? I know one question we've had in the past, he's from Worcester, but that's not a problem in this case, right?
Yeah, Mr. Pine represents retirees on the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to reappoint Robert Pine, 20 Montgomery Ave., to the Insurance Advisory Committee for a one-year term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to approve the warrant to police officer and/or dog officer pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 153. I guess one procedural question in front of us, we have the form of warrant under the statute under Chapter 140, Section 153, is there a requirement that I read all of this, or it's just to take a motion to approve?
The law.
Okay, that sounds good to me. So if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board approve and authorize the Chair to sign the warrant to police officer and/or dog officer pursuant to MGL, Chapter 140, Section 153.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item under New Business is to review an act on the Town Manager's appointment of Charbel Sucker, 12 Parmesan Drive, to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term to expire on June 30, 2024 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J. Have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is seeking a proclamation under Policy 30, so to review an act on the proclamation request for Melissa Magnussen for TK Horton on behalf of Troop 227 Boy Scouts of America, there's a proclamation under Item 15, which is consistent with Policy 30, recognizing Mr. Horton being elevated to the exalted rank of Eagle and a couple other items. Any questions or comments? Mr. LeBeau.
I'm all in favor of this. I'm just wondering if we want to amend the policy to, I mean, do we really need to have an action to approve a proclamation for a Boy Scout Eagles Court of Honor?
Yeah, this was when we went to setting a process, so we...
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, I think the process is great. I just think we might bump into cases like this where I'm, I'm not sure if it's really necessary.
I also had a comment.
Yeah, please.
I'm wondering if, if we're going to amend the policy so that it doesn't include scout proclamations, that's, makes what I'm going to say not relevant anymore, but I'm concerned because I don't think that our scout troops realize that the policy has been put into place, and they're bumping up against it, and I want to make sure that we don't run into a situation where they aren't able to get their proclamations on time, so...
I'd be fine taking it up at our next agenda, next meeting on the 27th, to take up amending Policy 30 to carve this out. It is a lot for what they're doing here. I mean, they're putting together recitals, we approve it under... I mean, they're putting together recitals, we approve it under the policy, the rest of it makes sense, but I'm, I'd be fine amending the policy or proposing amendments at our next meeting.
I'm also not really sure how it worked the old way, and whether or not we need to consult with staff in the manager's office to make sure that this isn't making their lives easier, to have the advance notice, and also the, the text of the proclamation coming to them from this, this troop leaders. So it's a couple of different points, I guess.
That's something we could learn. I mean, we could still require the timelines, it just doesn't require our action.
Board approval.
Yeah, I mean, we still want to make sure when someone comes in, hey, that can be the proactive approach to troops in town, to tell, ask them that if they have proclamations for elevations or for these, you know, Eagle Scouts or the like, it's a tremendous achievement for them, but I don't think they need to go through this. That being said, being mindful of resources that we have in town so we can do that, reach out to them, ask them X weeks before and do it that way, but pull it out from Policy 30. I think it's something we could do, we can work together on from now to the 27th and bring it forward.
Yeah, if I could, it just seems like all it would really need was a line in it that basically says that these type of routine recognitions don't require board approval. I think the intent of the policy was more along the lines of making sure we had something in place so that when we approved something like a day or a week, or we were doing a proclamation, for example, on Juneteenth, that we were setting, not setting precedent in a way that was going to come back and make it more difficult for us in future years, but I think we might have made it more cumbersome for things like Eagle Scouts, which is supposed to be something that's rare, but we have quite a few Eagle Scouts in Shrewsbury because we have exemplary scouts, I guess.
Exemplary scouts and pent-up demand from a year and a half of them being able to have these opportunities to recognize these fine young men. So why don't we, over the next couple of weeks, we'll take it offline. I mean, of course, the challenge always is when you build an exception to a rule, does it somehow swallow the rule? So we just need to be careful how we do it.
Would you like me to take a look, considering I drafted that policy in the first place?
Fantastic.
To see if I can amend it in a way that would make sense?
It's all yours. Thank you.
You don't want to fight around that?
In the parking lot after the meeting, all good. Okay, great. So I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the proclamation request from Melissa Magnuson for TK Horton on behalf of Troop 227 Boy Scouts of America.
Second.
Have been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are in correspondence. So Item 16, it's an email dated June 21st, 2021, from Chandra Rana of 6 Halando Drive, regarding internet outage on Halando Drive on June 20th, 2021. So noted. Next item, under correspondence, email dated June 21st, 2021, from Hannah Kane, regarding the American Jobs Plan update. So noted. Next item is email dated June 23rd, 2021, from Anadaro, the office of Hannah Kane, regarding the Chapter 90 bond bill. The bill would provide $989,636 in road and bridge funding for fiscal year 2022 under the state's Chapter 90 program, which I assume was subsequently approved. Has, Mr. Mizikar, has that been, that number hard on the 989,636 under Chapter 90?
I don't know if it's been signed into law yet or not.
Okay.
But that's the number we've carried throughout the budget process.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Next is email dated June 24th, 2021, from John McCourty, 25 Thomas Farm Circle, regarding Centec North, and it was a question regarding the traffic pattern for Centec North and whether there will be similar approaches to the no-left turn on South Street that we recently passed. So noted. Next item is email dated from Stan Tronziak, 562 South Street, regarding the South Street left-only turn. He had a question regarding our June 8th meeting and the action that we took, and he was asking about notice and whether those in that area were contacted. That's something that's where we can look at going forward in terms of communication as we're looking at Chapter, excuse me, Route 20 going forward, if there are any subsequent changes, that's something we can look into to make sure that if there were, we try to get as broad of a scope as possible in, in reaching out, but there may be other ways that we need to do going forward to make sure that folks hear. So noted. Next item is letter dated June 25th, from Preston Karp, regarding his scholarship, scholarship thank you card, the 2021 Town of Shrewsbury Scholarship. We wish him well as he starts this fall at the Boston Conservatory at Berkeley. So noted. Next item is an email dated June 28th, 2021, from Suzanne Shaw, 30 Main Boulevard, regarding request for speed monitor on Washington Street. Mr. Mizikar, we did respond to her. I just want to make sure that she is on the list, okay? And the other thing, something we consider as we talk about traffic going forward, just monitors in general and how many we have, and if we want to look at getting more, but that's a question we can bring up when we talk about traffic, which will be, we'll have to set that date. So noted. Next item is email dated June 28th, 2021, from Ruth Fibo, regarding Q2 status update from the Shrewsbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. There's a very thorough update on the, the second status from the DEI Task Force and the various subcommittees there. Mrs. Cassavant, do you want to add any additional color?
The task force met last night to talk about the format for the final report. It's certainly a challenge because there's so much information that needs to be conveyed, but we also want to make sure that the report is readable in length, and so talking about, that's pretty much what we're talking about, is how we're going to convey the points that we want to make as a group in a way that isn't overwhelming. And there's just probably a lot of work that I think would be ongoing even after the task force wraps itself up within the report and recommendations for ways that the town can further incorporate DEI into its operations. So I'm really, really excited about the work that's been done. I think all of the subcommittees, or seven of them now, have done an outstanding job of coming up with their recommendations and doing their research, and I would like to just take an opportunity to encourage people that are listening. There's a survey that was put together by the task force. It's very short. There are paper copies available in various locations throughout town. I know at the library there are some, and then it's also available online by going to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force, I believe on the webpage, the town webpage, that can be accessed as well. So more people that participate, the better picture we have of, you know, what, what we are like as a community as far as DEI and how we treat people who aren't necessarily in the majority, how we treat minorities, how we treat people with disabilities, people of different sexual orientations. It runs the gamut on that survey, so it'd be great if more people participated in it.
Okay, great. Thank you. The other thing to reading through the subcommittee reports will be interesting how they weave it all together, because you can tell there are distinct subcommittees and how they were looking at the various issues, and some even seemed more, say, bulleted, and then some had problem statements, and some had, so it'll be interesting, while everyone's marching towards a common goal, looking at various issues, and there's consistency, there's also a lot of differences, which, in terms of style, so it'll be interesting how that's all brought together.
Right, and that was why we literally spent an hour and a half last night trying to iron out what we wanted the report to look like, and then also knowing that there might be overlap within some of the subcommittees as to recommendations for the town and whether we want the overlap to be there because it further emphasizes the need for whatever the recommendation is, or if we want to take the overlap out. And then also, the group recognizes that just because something is a priority recommendation from the task force, it may not be feasible to be a priority recommendation for the town because there might be funding attached to it, or it might just take longer to implement, and there might be other things that can be implemented more quickly or with greater ease that maybe aren't as high of a priority, so do we even want to prioritize or just present a list of recommendations? So there's been quite a bit of conversation around this, and then the task force also decided that we're going to stay remote for the next meeting, which is in August, but then following that, we will be meeting in person because we don't think that we can in a remote setting really come up with a report that reflects basically the needs of each subcommittee and getting it, getting it right. I think it's really difficult to do virtually, so we'll see how that goes, having those meetings in person.
Yeah, when we did the Fiscal Study Committee in 2013 and had the various subcommittees, it was invaluable to be, once you got to the point of a report or a draft report to be in person to wordsmith, to go over, to have agreements and disagreements, and then working through those to make sure that you're getting the points across in a clear, concise way, too, so you don't get lost in the details. So that'll be a, we look forward to that report, so thank you. Next item is email dated June 29th, 2021, from David and Cynthia Kelly, 71 Janet Circle, and it's regarding Number 2 Janet Circle, and just questions under the Dover Amendment and that property. So noted. Next item is letter dated June 30th, 2021, from Alan Gao, 14 Point Road, Unit 1, regarding the 2021 Town of Shrewsbury Scholarship. We wish him well at Northeastern this fall, so thank you for sending that thank you note. So noted. Next item is a letter dated July 1st, 2021, from Mr. Mizikar, regarding appointing Ms. Los as acting town manager while he was out for a couple of days. So noted. Letter dated July 1st, 2021, from Central Mass Regional Planning Committee regarding fiscal 2022 assessment. It's our portion of costs and expenses for the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee, or Commission, excuse me, for, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 21, and ending June 30th, 2022, and our assessment's $10,713.38. So noted. Next item is an email dated July 12th, 2021, from Paul George, regarding zoning board. He resigned from the Zoning Board of Appeals. I just want to thank Mr. George for his outstanding service to the community. He would be very hard to replace. That's the, the vacancy that we talked about earlier, but we just wanted to thank him for his service and wish him well. So noted. Next item is an email dated July 7th, 2021, from Robert Ryan, 8 Colonial Drive, regarding an Eagle Scout or Circle of Honor, which will be held on Thursday, August 19th, 2021. So noted. Next item is email dated July 7th, 2021, from Chief Vona from Shrewsbury Fire Department, forwarding a message from the Mass Fire Sprinkler Association. So noted. Next, 31, letter dated July 1st, 2021. We received July 8th, 2021, from Melissa Magnuson to Robertson Drive, Bruson Boy Scouts of America to Troop 227. So noted. Next is an email dated July 8th from David Snowden, Department of Public Works Business Manager, regarding household hazardous waste, an update. So noted. And the last item of correspondence, an email dated July 8th from Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, the assessment that I just talked about a few items ago, and the invoice I think that was attached to it. If there are no other items that any members would like to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved and seconded. And a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye. Oh, really?
Keeping us on our toes.
I missed that.
Mrs. Cassavant.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. And it's been passed, and we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.